The June 10 meeting of the Buckland County Cultural and Recreation Authority. This is a record scheduled meeting. And we will go through the agenda. And we call the meeting order, and let me give our ethics request. It's the duty of each Cultural and Recreation Authority Board member to avoid the actual possible conflicts of interest. Does anyone know of any conflict of interest that you think might come before today? That means none. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as published? Motion by Commissioner Paulson, or second by Commissioner... Do not some de discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passed at six to zero. Vice Chair Briggs, I indicated earlier he had a conflict. This is a business conflict we did not resolve. The first order of business we have is public comment. The public is welcome to speak on any matter that comes before us. The time limit is three minutes. We have Seth Warren here set up to for ending today. Thank you for being here, Seth Warren. It's important to keep time. The Board does not expect you to comment on any public discussion. It's your time to talk to us about your comments, and that's why we have the first thing we through the public comment tonight. Yes, sir. Ron Ruden? Do you give your name and where you're from?
Sure. Steve Kane, I'm from Oak Forest. And I'm here individually, my own although I'm a board member of Oak Forest. And I would just like to mention to the Board that Saff Ashville, in my opinion, feels like an orphanal. We wanted a few areas with amenity, county cultural recreation facilities. And if, as planned, the Google building is demolished, they'll take away what we have there. We have many young people moving to the area. Revival, we have numerous housing projects going up. There's about 300 units behind Earth that are going to be opened. A couple of Hemingtons on Clayton Road. We have the given this property, the industrial property, so there's masses of people there. And the county has no recreational facilities, so you can keep that in mind for future growth. We appreciate the libraries very heavily used, but we need additional facilities. These apartments, they don't have outdoor recreation areas, and it's important to keep in mind for mental and physical health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any other public comment today? Ms. Baldwin? Good day, Ms. Baldwin. She's a member of Buckland County School Board. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Baldwin. I'm Assistant Taxpayer/Parent of Buckland County School Board now. At last week's County Commission meeting, it was noted that the CRA would be discussing the location for a new aquatic center or indoor pool. But I couldn't find any public agendas for your meetings on my only meeting minutes. The minutes revealed that since November, may be replacing the Zoey River Pool your number one priority, visiting aquatic centers in Gainesville, North Carolina, and Kingsport, Tennessee. An indoor Olympic-sized pool or aquatic center would be a plus for my company, but there needs to be stakeholder input at every stage of the decision-making process. This is one later, been no talks to school district officials, no talks with the Buckland County School Athletic Director or swim coaches, no input from other potential users of this pool. Your selection of a location should be delayed until collecting stakeholder input or exploration of public-private partnerships. Look at Boise, Idaho, where the YMCA and businesses in the community donated $8 million and the city contributed $5 million for a state-of-the-art aquatic center. Here, the aging downtown YMCA or YWCA might be interested in collaboration. Local businesses could donate property or offer cheaply so as to offer employees the fabulous perk adjacent to work, or its four- man naming rights like the U.S. Cellular Center next door. I would also urge you to look at the most centrally located county high school, AC Reynolds, where the county already owns land. It's just one mile off Highway 40 on the I-ling highway. Then there's the Ashville Red Park Pool, which could potentially be converted into an indoor pool. The central location is key. Renovating or expanding the Zoey River Center is a possibility I'm sure you're considering, especially since the county purchased one and a half acres next to Robertson High School just a couple of weeks ago. But due diligence must occur. I encourage you to look into the private public partnerships, a central location, or converting an outdoor pool. This doesn't have to be a pool with all bells and whistles, but functional one that benefits all countywide users. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Thank you for your service on school. Any other public comments tonight? Yes, ma'am. Black shirt.
Good afternoon. I'm Linda Humphries from Warner's Lake, in the other end of the county. I'm honored to see you folks working today. If we might, as citizens, to know more about what you do. I can't help but agree with Ms. Baldwin. We seem to get these packets in this county as citizens. Lovely wrapping paper, lovely photos. And they're presented to the commissioners, and commissioners put a two-label on them to the citizens of Buckland County. And the question is, from, from, from the citizens of Buckland County? I couldn't help but agree more with Ms. Baldwin. There's not enough stakeholder input, enough stakeholder involvement, enough knowledge out there or information being shared with the citizens. Cultural Recreation Authority. There's quite a few of you coming from different expertise. Now, what denotes an authority, I'm not sure. But I know our community has a lot of authorities as related to what our needs are, in terms of what's happening in Saff Ashville. I urge you to open your doors. I know you've opened your door to the meeting, but let's do a little bit more in terms of communicating truth to the commissioners. I don't believe I've seen anything of this on the agenda as related to the commissioner's budget. I just happen to find that. As citizens, we need to know more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Any other public comment today? Yes, sir. Black shirted, you will speak, sir.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Eric Best. I'm a senior high school swim coach. But I was born and raised here in Ashville, and I was an athletic swimmer. I've watched the main green areas, swim programs grow because they added facilities. And the Green Spur Aquatic Center is really, is a really nice facility. But I don't know that it was designed by swimmers. It was designed by someone else other than swimmers. So I think the coaches, the local coaches need to have some input in designing or location of pools or facilities. There's, Zoey River is on its last leg, and it needs to be done. I know that Warren Wilson College is also on its last leg, and it's probably going to be done away within the next couple of years, if not sooner. So there is, is a growing need to have something that meets everybody's needs. And a central location would be beneficial. I don't know if they've already done the demographics or not, but of the six public high schools, we've got 32 at Owen, 62 at Reynolds, 44 at Robertson, 32 at Ashville High, 32 at North Bonham, and 15 at Irwin. Those are the, those are the numbers from the, from the public high schools that...
Say those again.
No, yeah, numbers of what? Numbers of swimmers, of competitors. Competitors this season, this last season. Yeah, Reynolds had 62 this last season.
Can you say it again?
Sure. Owen had 32, Reynolds had 62, Robertson had 44, Ashville High had 32, North Bonham had 32, Irwin had 15 members in this swimming team. And that was the public ones. Carolina Day had over 30. Ashville's school had over 30, Tri-Cup had over 30. There's 68 members in the Ashville Tri-Cup. The Mathis Swimmers at Warren Wilson, that practice at Warren Wilson and practice at the YMCA. We've got, we've got the Ashville Swim Club that had over 80 participants. You have YWNC Coranas that has over 138. We just, we need this one, we need one that's, that we can have competitions at, that can have enough, enough deck space to hold more than two teams, that can have enough parking and enough leashes to hold all the spectators that would, that would be in the elements. It would bring, you know, for, for a three-day meet, you could bring in enough, enough to warrant the building up. Because people have to stay at a hotel or eat at restaurants and everything happens.
Thank you, Coach. We appreciate you training on this kind of this job, vice president. Any other? Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Hello. My name is Kurt Campeland, and I'm the director of our competitive swimming for the YMCA in Western North Carolina, for our swim pool. And, you know, we have YMCA pools and train really all the way from Andersonville to downtown. We train at Reuter. And as Coach Eric Best said, we have, you know, just about 140 athletes right now. We're growing, and we're the biggest school club in the area. And it would be great to see a new facility somewhere, you know, in the region that could, as someone who would potentially use this facility a lot, as we use the Zoey River Center a lot right now. All of our pools, we currently have just one out of six different pools throughout the year in order to get enough space and the right training distance. You know, we use rec parking at pool in Andersonville for long course training, and then all of our YMCA pools and the Zoey River Pool during the short course season, through the fall winter. And it'd be great to have something centrally located that was much larger than, you know, really accessible for all of our members to meet in one place with multiple practices, multiple sites, and it's simple. And I also want to offer out myself, as someone who could benefit, your conversation a lot about a new pool. I was a NCAA swimming champion at Auburn University, and I was also, I've been a Division One coach for 10 years, and I'm new to the area. And I also helped and designed and built a $16 million aquatic center at the University of Iowa that is hosting the NCAA Division One Championships this next year. So I know a lot about building a pool that can help, you know, your regular kid go down a large slide, but I also know quite a lot about what makes a great competitive starting lot, what makes a good cover system, which lane should we buy, how deep should the pool be, how wide should the lanes be, where should the cross be on the bottom of the pool, all that stuff. So, I would just reach out and say something off the block.
Kurt, what's your last name?
Kevin P.J.M.P.L.E.M.A.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have a pardon?
I have pardon. I can give you one.
You also have a good one. All right. Any other public comment tonight? Yes, sir. Ron Ruden?
My name is Chris Morgan, longtime president of South Bonham Area, retired state employee. We're very glad our kids play sports together as well. I want to speak in support of leaving the pool for the New Food Works Act. Of course, that pool has served South Bonham through many, many years. It was originally owned by the Oak Forest situation, as you might know, and the county bought it from us 10 years ago, and it has served the area. The South Bonham Area certainly needs to have that recreational opportunity to the residents of that area as well as the rest of the county. The schools come there all the time to practice when there's swim things, but I've been in that pool when they have swim. It's, it's pretty tough. It's small. There's not enough space for parking, not enough space for the teachers to talk about. So I talked to each and every one of you, consider very highly of not moving that. It needs to be something out in South Bonham Area that's a good start of leaving that pool for the sex. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Good to see you. Any other public comment tonight?
I'm sorry I got in here late, and I hope that I'm not repeating anything that's already been said, but I didn't stand a part. And I've been involved in the aquatics team since my kids were little, and now my son just finished the NT double A's at the University of Virginia. So he's been swimming for 12 years, and 12, 13 of my girls. And we identified early on, I would say 10 years ago, easily, and found out that there were people, earlier than that, who recognized that there was a need for aquatic facility in Ashville because of growing sport. We then looked for a nonprofit organization called Ashville Aquatics Incorporated, and started investigating, did some live groundwork, and I have lots and lots of files if you're interested, of economic development, investment assessment, and having documents for needs assessment from all the teams, all the schools, including masters, including learn just swim programs, safety in the water programs, records and records of meetings with city council, with county commissioners. We had a great start back with a partnership with A.D. Tech when Hayray Bailey was there. Early initial meetings looked like, wow, we could employ A.D. Tech. There's a lot of interest and money within the school system, and I can go into more detail about that, maybe in smaller community. But I've been president of this organization for a long time, and we have been on hiatus since about 2007 when the county, which Terry can verify that, with lots of meetings in France. So we are also available resource, like I said, that has lots of studies and groundwork already for this.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Baldwin. Any other public comment tonight? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, President Terry, for remembering the importance. Jerry Rice, I live in Kansas. Been here many times in Kansas. The pool isn't just necessarily what it's made today for. I think it's a part of local recreation. But I think my picture that is being sent around, I'm going to have to see this one. I've got, I've got to give this with all the information I'm, that I've been sharing and much, much more. I don't give the county commissioners the disk. Last week, it's got this on it, and I've been talking about it for a long time. And if you want, my opinion about the aquatic center, the aquatic center could not go in the Inca District where it was pointed out to be in 2008 on one of the pictures that you've got there. It's got the aquatic centers, it's got the recreation. And my, my point is that the school board in 2010, when it looks at the property at the Inca Center, it's in their own, but in the Inca Center, if you will look at the diagram that the ball field, and when I show you this one that I'll give when I leave, is the future site for a school, right beside the ball field. Now, if they took serious what I said in July, which I believe they did, they moved this stuff, if we're talking about the ball field, future site of school, they moved it to the top of the hill, they got real serious. Now, what are we going to do with this down here now? Well, I think the aquatic center was on the list as well that I'm giving you the picture of, and this is also going to be the, or if it ain't, it's a serious problem. I have lived here all my life in the Inca District since the Second World War, and I know Inca property like the back of your hand. And I know how contaminated this side is. They, nobody needed to tell me. There are two in this room that lost family members in cancer that worked in the lab and other places in the plant, and the venture, and all kinds of things. They've been more than thirty things done to that river than you could ever imagine. You pull up an actual physical time, and let me tell you, you ain't short on the information about the Houndry Valley Creek. So I want to show you that budget for Buckland County was 1.4 short, they said, this year. Well, they didn't tell you they had 1.5 designated for a bridge going over into the Inca Center, and they pulled it back once the budget was passed. So that's 1.5 million they got for budget right now. So our correct goes for 1.5. It's in it. So what I'm pointing out is they have been planning in the works, and these plans are very clear, the intent of what Buckland County is going to do in the future, and the people that is in the process of working with them, and that's anywhere if you would encard them. So I want you to see, if they move the school size from where they did, they, I think, what about the aquatic center that was on the chart, and the property that they could talk at Firecrack? It was in there, not that being, not that being within their region. So the future of this Recreation Authority in the Inca District is a big, big deal to me, and I don't want to see children or adults harmed in this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment tonight? Yes, sir.
Senator Anderson, Senator Lee Darrell, Sports Commission, and a class resident. I just wanted to, I don't know, sort of summarize, but I think what you're hearing into that is a lot of passion about swimming, a lot of passion about pool, and being in our community, and that, that's wonderful. And I'm really excited to see, you know, in a closed budget, we have some progress to be made on this. The one thing I do want to just, just encourage you is, is all this passion, kind of a wonderful resource in our community. We have some really talented folks that have been, been studying this for a long time, really knowledgeable about it, and those are the ones that are going to be on that deck with those, you know, really crammed teams trying to crawl in, you know, crawling the really tight swim down from the LSC meets, where they're going to be on the pool. And, and we need to listen to these folks, and we need to hear what they have to say. They're, they're going to be the ones in there, five of them are swimming laps and coaching kids. And as I said before, I just encourage you to hear what they have to say, listen to them. No one's ever kind of agreeing where those things should go. You know, I think that's pretty easy to see, but all around the right facility, and I think these folks have that answer versus... Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
All right. Any other public comment? One and a half people. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the May 20 of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the May 20 regular meeting minutes? I'm going to just current second by, and just test the eight, so there are any discussion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. And we will approve minutes by six to zero. Under old business, I would, it could be new business, I'm going to put it under old business. I received a call today representing Mochon with news that his intent is to abolish the Cultural Recreation Authority possibly as early as today. So I don't know. The message was that, I mean, I didn't talk to him, I just got a message. Message was basically, it wasn't working out today, and it was planned by the committee, and there may be a need to look at it again, but it wasn't working. And so I don't know, we will likely learn our fate in the next 24 hours, I think. So, new business. Any discussion? I would say that Representative Mochon did call County Manager Green several weeks ago that, so this is, this is something that is not totally surprise, but partly disappointing. We, the general assembly has a right to make us or take us away, and that's the way our Constitution says it, so. I would like to say so. And I think it, it's also going to go, I don't know if it's the right time, it's also going to go to the input that we received today from the public. I think, you know, no matter what fate of this board, I think it's been, been good that these items have come in and that they have been discussed, and that the public is now out. You know, maybe, I don't know, maybe they feel more comfortable in this smaller environment here, maybe they feel more comfortable, you know, than, than maybe the commissioner. I don't know. But the information we received today, I think, is very critical for, you know, moving forward on these, on what the public would want. And I, and I think you probably already did this, but you know, I would certainly want to have the contacts and the names of the people that did speak today, that have so much more experience of this than anybody here today at the table. And the other thing is, is really bringing these communities together to discuss the, you know, the importance of a pool. I'm actually encouraged by the information that I heard today, the passion, as, as someone said about, about, you know, the need and, and the various ways to look at it. Also, the, you know, there are other areas that have done smaller projects, whether they, you know, cover pools, aquatic centers, whatever. And as has been spoken about today, they went to namesakes, they went to, and you and I saw some of that recently in a bigger market than here, but they went to people that would have naming rights, they went to institutions such as hospitals and so on. So we'd like for us to have what information about Boise, I think somebody mentioned Boise or, but there's other places of, of, of that. So I think some of the, some of the communication that we have received, and I'm sorry that some of that communication was not enough, but what we're hearing today around pool is pretty exciting. I mean, you're all looking at it, you're all those different people coming out, the coaches, and the sports commission, and the citizens coming out, and I want to continue to encourage that wherever this, this pool attempt ends up, to make sure we get all that information from these folks here today, because that is a pretty powerful group of people that spoke of some, some good novels.
I want to, I mean, I think it's very sad that this has happened, and I'm still working with everyone, and one of the original intent of the CRA was to connect Buckland County. And I find this incredibly disappointing, because we have all worked extremely hard, and I think this is an attempt, according to Representative Mochon, to once again have a way to concern the city and the county, because his quote was, "The concern of the county is ultimately the city of Ashville will dominate the activities of the CRA and will cause the county parks and facilities to lose out." That's never been an issue, and I'm sorry that the CRA has been a little involved, and I know that we will all continue to work to connect Buckland County and we can really win.
I'd like to say that I share a sense of this effect and shock, and I have been honored to serve with Officer Buck's honor's award. I think all of us have taken our stewardship and do share responsibility on having the taxpayers very seriously. Granted, it was an entity that we have a lot to learn, but I think I speak for every one of us when I say that we have worked diligently, learning, working with staff, caring, listening, as much as we can throughout this process. Mostly, I'm saying for the people of the county. And, and yeah, that includes the city, but I think Commissioner Cost is correct. We've not ever had any group discussion about the city in and around of the CRA or any other municipality. We've been very focused on the residents of the county, that includes a lot of these good folks, whatever township they live in, and what best serves the greatest number of people. And it's been an honor to focus and work in that regard around. I've been very proud of Buckland County, especially the commissioners, this kind of unusual and bold step, law of the legislature to commit the monies to a dedicated income stream to support cultural activities. And I have to say, in the world, post-recession or in recession... And I have to say, in the world, post recession, or in recession, or anywhere else, that shifts our quality of life and our amenities for our children and our families to the bottom line, constantly threatened by other budget items. It's been a measure of great pride for me as a citizen to know that the commissioners and legislative delegation cared enough to commit those funds specifically for that purpose and to set this community to the block in that way. So I'm really disappointed and I'm sad and I don't know if the CRAA will ever come back. But for this period of time, I think all of us have taken all of you very seriously, whether you like the CRAA or not. And we've been proud to listen and I just hope this community dialogue will stay ongoing and smart forever.
I think when we started, we envisioned of what we could do with this, what this board could do and how we could make it a leader really in the country, uh, to support our citizens, especially our children, and to attract, uh, companies to Ashville that saw a couple of wonderful children, we could do for the county. And I'm really disappointed.
All right, any other discussion? We did have to start from scratch, beginning with how employees work, basically setting up a small government. Took a lot of time. And so I, I, again, I certainly agree with everything that's been said. It's an opportunity, I think it's a, it's a nationally odd opportunity, it could have been something really good, and maybe it will, maybe we can resurrect it. I certainly would encourage everyone, it feels like we, we were able to accomplish things that we talked to General Assembly, encourage it to resurrect in some way, because the General Assembly couldn't do that as easily as they could create in the first place. Okay, anything else on that? So while we're in business, as long as that, any other old business? Do business? If you have a presentation on capital projects for travel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, CRAA board members. Those of you in the public, my name is Randy Vick, and I'm Recreation Division Head for the Library and Recreation and Culture Department. And welcome to the opportunity to talk to you today about the possibilities of a new mini pool to replace our existing water pool. This is a conversation that's been going on in this community for a while. Being a part of words that's been conversations and staple groups that's been meeting for quite a while, so I see this has got to do with the next conversation. And our hopes to bring you today some options on how you can build best, you have most amount of water that we can, that could also possibly be expanded in the future. Zoyer Pool is formerly the Skyland Recreation Pool, was bought by the county in 1978. It is a six lane, 25 yard long, 35 foot wide pool. It is used most often by swim teams at this point, but it is a community pool that hosts water exercise classes, lap swimmers, swim lessons, and through the years has hosted a wide variety of, of community water activities. Annually, at this point, we're serving approximately 10,000 swimmers a year that visitations have as Zoyer's sake. So the pool has been repaired, patched, minted for many years. General Services Department of the County, contractors have kept it open with lots of efforts. There are mechanical, structural, and compliance issues that continue to grow in that site. Most recently, the patching was done on the wind damaged shingles on the roof, which is, uh, one of the newer pictures that you see here. It is a non-membership indoor county recreation facility in Southbun. County staff met with the county manager and the county about replacement option for Zoyer. The county manager has included 6.5 million dollars in 2000, and have by 15 capital plans for the county that put up the rest of that, uh, plan that's in the coming years. The new proposed pool that we're discussing with you today is bigger than Zoyer. It's a bigger footprint. The 6.5 million is for building a pool. And staff was corrected by the county management to look at property options that are county-owned and could accommodate a pool. If we were lucky enough to move forward very, very quickly in the next couple of months, then we're still thinking the process of due diligence, planning, design, construction could take as much as two years to complete. We just think this is a tough timeline of the curtains, distant conditions of Zoyer Pool. Timing is crucial. So when we've looked at some pool possibilities, the parameters, and what 6.5 million could build as a community pool, we've looked back at the 2013 aquatic facilities study that was approached, well, analysis that was completed, um, in April of 2013. It includes a 25 yard, 25 meter pool, has a seating capacity, deck space for approximately 400 spectators, though we need a parking bathroom to accommodate, um, that, this number is an overflow. The footprint of that particular facility is a 26,790 square foot building. It would need approximately four acres for the building and the parking. So those are what we are working with, the county manager's request was to look at what type of county-owned property might be available for that. What I'd like to do before we start that, though, I'd like to ask Carrie Gentile, who's been in the aquatic director for 20 years and worked for Bunkin County for 31 years, so she knows a little bit about the county and, and the, the studies and the work that we've had in the past, to ask Carrie to talk a little bit about what a proposed 25 yard, like 25 meter indoor pool offers swimmers, teams, and for competitions.
If this is the decision and this is the size pool we decided to make, we could offer two teams to practice at a time. One had to two hours each team. We could have all six county high schools practice at this facility during the day with two teams we could practice at each time. It would give us a chance to have lap swim possibly going on while swim teams are practicing. It would be a nicer facility for us to honor swimming lessons, water fitness classes, and a multitude of other aquatic activities. Our pool at Zoyer is 36 feet wide, you're okay. It's a six lane pool and the lanes are very thin, as Mr. Hankel mentioned, you know. Really good swimmers can swim around those lanes, but new high school kids have a rough time, we have a few bloody noses and black eyes when the swim team season starts every year because they run into each other. But with a 25 meter pool, the lanes will be approximately 10 feet wide. We could get more kids in that pool during swim team practices. Mr. Ben said, you know, Nelson's got 62 kids, Robertson's got 44. We'd have a better place for them to swim. The programs could grow, as well as master swimming and more lappers, more adults that want to stay fit, and more swimming lessons could come along as well.
I'm bringing to you today two county-owned properties that could be considered as possibilities for a pool of this size. The first one I bring you is out in the Handler area, and it sits on the only existing recreation park that we have, which is the Bunkin County Sports Park, which has property that's available that could potentially be used for pool placement. On this particular slide, the building that you see, the gray building, is the footprint of the existing Zoyer Pool. There's not a pool there, that's not a building there, that's just to give you an idea of the existing size and shape of the Zoyer Pool. A bigger pool of the one we talked about just a minute ago would follow the size of the blue line. So you have a bigger footprint, about 26,000 square feet, as I mentioned. That placement was only to show you that that piece of property is probably eight to 10 acres. And that is the soccer field that is should come into the sports park, I'll say until rather, and you go down in Patrion, past the community garden, past the, uh, recreation field that we use for adult softball, excuse me, adult kickball, down into the soccer park, past the soccer fields, and back up the hill, up above the sports, the soccer fields. The road to you on the upper right is 1923 Smokey Park Highway that intersects up the road a short distance with I-26. So that's the geography of that. That piece of property, um, where it sits, like, is being used as a recreation, soccer, sports, kite flying, dog walking, lacrosse, rugby, multi-use field by the county. That, the, uh, that site also adds the additional possibility of expanding a pool if and when budget will become available. So there is expansion possibilities there. The second, the second facility is in Southbun. It is the current site of the Zoyer Pool on TC Robertson High School campus. The pool, the Zoyer Pool is the one on the right towards the bottom of the screen. What we've done again is taken that, sized that facility and moved it up just to show you that in the, one of the piece of property that's currently purchased by the county is the one on the upper left to the right of the tennis courts. The entrance into the existing, the current Zoyer Pool is between the two sets of tennis courts, so it's back off the screen to your left. You come in beside the, uh, football stadium, back around, where you come down where the two little cars are on the bottom right. That's the access of this time. Those are the pieces of property that we've looked at, considered to bring to you today, and I bring you a staff request for your discussion. The staff request that the CRAA board give permission, board staff, to begin the due diligence process on the Bunkin County Sports Park property as a site that houses new 25 yard, 25 meter with its supporting spaces, facility. And that Springside property in the TC Robertson campus be considered our secondary request.
I have a couple of questions.
Take a second.
What?
Why?
So the, the number of county swimmers, what, where was that derived from?
The swimmers, what, we keep track, Carrie keeps track of the normal recreation swimmers and, and swim team people, so that's visitations here. Our pool during the summer at Zoyer is mainly closed, and, and the outdoor pools are the point of focus during the summer. It's, uh, we have staffing issues, but more importantly, it's a much hotter pool in the summer, and also that, um, that there's other pools in the area that are open, including Red Park and some of the other pools in the summer that's here.
Oh, and, and speaking to, um, the, the schools, what was their feeling about that? What, what?
We've not gotten input on these specific locations.
Did I not talk to the location, talking about the size of the pool and what their desire?
We've talked to master swimmers who are 50 meter, and, um, we've, we've talked to collegiate, the, the size of this pool would meet collegiate NC2, a short course distance. The 25 yards would meet the high school, help me up on volunteer, I think I've got this in the right order.
But, but we had conversations with Reynolds and, and the schools of having this continued out with the.
We've not had those conversations yet.
And I just have one more question. Um, the 6.5, what, what we, I know we talked quite a bit about exploring grant opportunities and naming opportunities so that, um, we have bigger, what, what's happening with that?
We've not pursued this yet.
Wouldn't it be premature before pursuing all those things to just settle for 6.5 million when, if we had community input, uh, we could have a bigger facility, this would be revenue producing, rather than limiting ourselves.
And people were looking, um, Commissioner Cross, when we were looking ahead, we were saying, what can we get done in this year's budget, in this year's capital plan to begin soon to have something in place in the next year or two? A bigger facility will take all of the funding we have in this year's budget, excuse me, this upcoming year's budget, and go to the board of commissioners in the next couple of weeks. And it will take more time to develop that proposal.
Another question. Is the, um, my question is the comments, is the Zoyer Pool, what we know it's a fair check. I like that. I know. Um, is it hot or cold for another year or two?
Like, like, in, like, in, like? We'll do everything we can.
Okay.
Is it ever going?
I mean, is there something other than the way that it is operated right now, that is in cadence status or whatever?
I don't think so. I think that, you know, we are losing power a little bit, it's, and I realize that we cannot do a great deal of construction because they, they have to make it handicap accessible, and we are not. So, I mean, the filter is, the original filter in the 1960s is the one that you all put in, and, and when it goes, it will have to replace, it'll have to be cut out of it and then a new one put in, that will be quite expensive. I think there are systems that could fail in that pool and it may get almost impossible to burn.
And I know, we had a conversation before about this, Randy, but if you were to replace this Zoyer Pool on that site, just like you're shifting around, we have talked about the cost of covering another existing outdoor pool in the county. Can you speak to that, what that cost might be, even as an interim measure?
So let me, let me, I don't have my number in front of me, and I apologize, I'll give that to you. We had a study done that would look at, um, a cover one, one of our existing, or one of our existing outdoor pools. The cost of that was approximately 1.5 million, and it was a temporary fix, it would be a five to 10 year life expectancy on that. So it's got, it's got a limited life investment. The reason for the cost of that's not just the enclosing of the pool, but those outdoor pools that we have now aren't, the locker rooms are not heated, the offices are not heated, there's not the infrastructure to operate them past, um, the summertime, the 10, 12 week summer. So it would take infrastructure, it really takes some mechanical changes also, in addition to heating your space of the pool itself.
So do you envision this, okay, we had, the direction we were looking at was more of aquatic center, which is much more comprehensive than replacement. Do you anticipate this facility to be revenue generating at all?
It will, it will generate revenues. I do not believe it will be break even right away. There will be debt to pay back and systems put in place and staff to hire.
Okay. Did the aquatic center, somewhere between the Cadillac and the replacement, what kind of additional cost would that be?
You know, I'm not sure.
I know it depends on what's in there, of course, what, a range, because we're talking about debt service and we're talking about a long-term need that's been there a long time and how to, whether we just replace it or whether we do something more for the future.
It will take considerably, it's a considerably bigger footprint, a bigger property. And my understanding, when we've looked at it in the past, it's been 28 to $30 million.
But wasn't it came sport at 18?
Eight, I don't remember.
Was it? There's an 18 number.
18, I believe that figure came from Greensboro.
The one in, the one in 3016?
Greensboro.
Greenville, South Carolina.
Greensboro.
I think on this one, before we do anything, I want to get public comment, Chairman to stretch it on that a minute. So I do want to hear from you, but let's, I think the way I'd like to do it is to ask questions, then let's hear from the public and then let's decide on ourselves. Any other questions, Fran?
I'm going to reorient myself now. I'm trying to picture why, I know the definition of a replacement is the CRAD, because I'm sure as well as I do this exercise, but if there's someone who I want to talk about, my vision, I know it in the past, it's under the same. So having said that, that's, that's nice to talk. I do believe that we've done a heck of a lot of work to make this kind of fruition and I think it will. Is the six and a half million dollar replacement what we all have thought about?
No.
I don't think that is our intention from the start, so we want it more grand and more usable for more folks.
The one in the Chandler area leaves the opportunity to expand so that if we can only do six and a half million dollars at this point in order to have an indoor pool, if we did it in Chandler, we could then have a refined source for naming it and any other important researches that wanted to contribute to it and expand it into more of an aquatic center.
What concerns me is, I have to really, really, got to hope out there. I think it's worth for the community, I think it's a great revenue stream and I think ideally enough could increase the needs of a three-year-old or an eight-year, nine-year-old. But right now, without revenue stream, without being thoroughly considering the market and borough which is one that's done, I think it's premature enough to explore all the options to see what the revenue is, see what we can do. But I have a hard time justifying spending six and a half million dollars in county tax time for just abandoning solution, which, you know, every swimmer's group we've spoken to, and I've spoken to a lot, everyone we've seen talks about the great needs, the competitiveness and the revenue stream that will bring to Bunkin County. So three day meets, all of it. And now we're finding out something that isn't replaceable. That was not the consensus of this board and it would have probably been better a while back if somebody had given us a heads up and said, hey, what's my draw, you have six and a half million? What do you want to do? Do you want to pursue getting a grant? Do you want to, and then we could be started with something.
Well, Commissioner Frost, as I understand our function, and again, kind of looking at, again, leaving Mr. Westhoff to it, our job is to recommend recommendations and that's what, that's what this is about. This could be our last meeting as a sanctioned entity. I think we could make, I think it would be, if that's your feeling, it would be appropriate to make a recommendation that let's set this and then recommend the full commission to increase the amount and look at a more comprehensive project. That's one option we could do. We could say, yes, this is good, let's replace it. That's another possibility. Or we could just say, no, let's just go back to drawing. I would say, and I remember this part, it seemed like we met, you talked to us, I was on the commission and you, and you did a lot of work on it. And so I'm kind of curious what the public says about, you know, there's not totally a word in hand because we don't recommend the pool commission. And again, it may be all academic depending on our general assembly's action in the next couple of days. But I would be kind of interested in that because we didn't have a dollar figure nor did we have a limitation on what we're doing in the last minute. And I think David, Ed, go ahead.
I just want to clarify two things, Mr. Staff, and just a second. We've been treating the Zoeyler Pool replacement all along as a separate and high priority. And that's been true from the time we had the CRAD award to that Zoeyler Pool. Our primary concern here is that we're very close to losing that pool. And if that pool goes down, there is no play of indoor swimming in Bunkin County. So we think that's a serious enough issue that the replacement of that pool still has to be looked at as a priority. Secondarily, we're not asking this board to approve the site. We're asking him for permission to pursue the due diligence process on possibly those two sites. We cannot assure you at this point that either one of these is really feasible. We think we found a site in the sports park site that does offer expansion free and, in other words, that we can answer the Zoeyler, keep as quickly as this can be done as we are likely to in a system near emergency, but doesn't preclude adding on to that facility at a later time. So we're not looking at it as a pure war that I do invest with precluding building of our aquatic facility in future.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Last fall, when we first started as a group, we had the Zoeyler Center. And I remember asking at that meeting for a needs assessment and what research had been done. And I'm very happy to hear so many citizens coming forward today and basically saying the same thing I said last fall, which is let's get that input from folks, let's talk to coaches, let's talk to high schools, let's listen. And kindly Fran and Mr. Sherry came to see me and they had actually done a lot of work and meant with one thing. Some of it was years ago or two years ago, but they were not in the dark about those things, none less. I shared with Commissioner Frost since that, whether it's a temporary solution or a long-term solution, I really hate to spend six and a half million dollars in taxpayer money on something that does not address what is needed by the families of Bunkin County. And I mean, that's why I asked about it, could we just spend a million or a million and a half, put a cover on something to get us through, or as Terry said, can we hang on to what we've got for another year or two while we figure this out? I think it's positively essential to engage the public and the academic community and those clubs in this discussion to take advantage of the expertise that already exists in our community. And I don't have a clear sense of the site, but I'm hearing these good folks talk central, central, central. I mean, maybe this does need to be at ATAC, maybe it needs to be closer in the town. We have a lot of people in this town that need to get into a pool and some of them can't afford memberships in other places. So I am, you know, in as much as my hours worth of service. Well, I'm really committed to these good folks and what they need and that's worth it. We're not spending taxpayer money, let's do it like we need to do it.
So let me jump on what you said too, because I am also encouraged by the information today. I'm also, I'm a little confused to some extent. We're going to invest whatever it is. We need to make sure we meet the, we have to do that, we're charged with that, they hold us accountable to do that. And we have a very awkward situation with the board. How much would it cost to bring it up to 10?
I think it'll.
Fix it where it's at right now?
I think it's 545, would it?
No, okay, 545, that's.
That's immediately, nothing else worries us.
How long does that give us?
Well, I'd say you've got a Lincoln Bullitt's close to 50 years old. They won't be far, they won't be on the baseball field.
I mean, maybe, I mean, we need to throw everything out, so I'm just, I'm just talking, okay? I mean, maybe that needs to be part of what we talk about, is that we fix it and we fix it now. You know, maybe that's part of what we look at and we get all this information, we get all this.
And the sponsorships.
You know, recently got back from Nashville and much bigger scale, like a Boise, much grander scale, but it still works the same way. Their first source of money was a few sort of land. Of course, they got some really big ones up there. And the second was incentives. And the third was, you know, their local government or whatever. And within all that's grants and all the other things. So they explored all those different options. We can do that, we can do that. I mean, we can pull in, we can pull in money if we fix the need there and then do what the community says we need to. And obviously, again, I'm encouraged by this input, you know, and the experts that we have. And I'm implying that we need to hear a lot more. But I also feel for the Zoeyler Pool thing that, you know, we might have to carry that. We can't leave it on the foot. I would want to lay the money in there. So, you know, I think that's going to have to be part of, part of what we do. Actually, I also did this last hour, this earnings.
We picked a site for the, this relates our community because we got a partnership with Southern City Ashland.
Is that right?
So they have a lot of people who are looking to help us, who really need. And there's a lot of staff time to do buildings that can be used.
And I think, I think the sites, based on everything I'm hearing out here today, I think a site's premature. But I think we got, we got to figure out a way, we got to figure out a way to handle that need. You know, I'm ready to make any kind of recommendation, but I'm just saying that obviously that can be done. It's mostly $500, $50,000 an hour out there in that community, been there a long time. Maybe get some money and try and make something. Let me, let me reference the county, I mean, Mr. Westhoff, you've got.
Yeah, let me imagine this right now. Clarify, if we go back to the statute. I think initially, the authority is operating within a relatively defined amount of money. Dr. Green has been here a couple of times to give us that explanation. Under the statute, the authority has three, three courses of action under the statute. And this is all ran you, so I thought we would understand it even if it ran a while, so I'm guessing now. But you've got three provisions in the statute for the authority for this board. One is to acquire, maintain and operate building structures and facilities as may be necessary for convenience and for convenience for the operations of the authority. But the two main ones are, and these are divergent and it's making a sense of what the committee is grasping at. Number 10 in the statute is to allocate funds for repairs, renovations and improvements to real property, personal property under jurisdiction authority. The allocation of funds, I believe, would be, would be the allocation of the funds within the limits that they, you, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to press that. But what Dr. Green has given us, the limits based on the taxi percentage of what the authority can work with. So that 10 is allocate funds for repairs, renovations and improvements to real, to personal property. That I think would address, for instance, the Zouger rule. There's another option, there's another provision in the statute, which I think it would be regarded as separate. Make plans, surveys and studies of library and parks, greenways, recreation facilities and so forth under jurisdiction authority. And to prepare and make recommendations to the county. My reading of this would be that within the money that we have, based on what the county is, what Dr. Green said, is you're operating with number 10 to allocate funds for repairs, renovations, improvements to real personal property. I think number 15, which may be what Commissioner Frost was talking about and several others as well, in turn in particular. Make plans, surveys and studies of the micro parks and greenways and make recommendations to the county. So what I think this statute implemented would be, there are two different issues if I made myself clear and if I understand what the statute says. One is the allocation of funds that are available, that we've been given, and the second is to make more long-term plans, but the county can't, the cultural authority can't implement those. That is for recommendations to the county, Mr. Chairman. That's the way I read it. Maybe separate equal, maybe 20 of you disagree with you, but I think you could, there are two different approaches. One is the allocation of funds available and the second is to make plans. It is not even that I said it would prevent those from being rolled in. The other would be recommendations to the county. I'm reading this from the back. I don't know if Chairman, if you, Ellen, but you would at least have recommendations to work with.
I'm wondering if the effect of making the repairs that we need to keep Zoeyler going would cause the building of the new, in the, I mean, post-come, the new containers? What's the financial impact of this?
I think the commissioners, you said, I would think the commissioners should honor our recommendation to set aside that we're going to have money and that we can allocate it.
Yeah, in this slide, the debts, you know, of course, we wouldn't pay for it upfront any more than we'd pay for it upfront. The debt service would be 475,000.
Which is 100,000 less than the cost to fix Zoeyler short term. So, how I would check.
We have to just allocate the debt service. Right, okay, so you're allocating. That's probably, is that what y'all were saying in Frank? They're not, I mean, it's in our capital plan, it's in the, the county manager last week gave a capital plan that included the 6.5 million dollar project and the debt service of 475,000. Is it your understanding that the only thing in the actual budget would be the debt service?
Yes, I'm answering that a little bit. I certainly have the school, yes, that money would be borrowed. So the obligation of the CRAD would be the debt service.
And of course, if we take, if we buy it, we are obligating. In that sense, we can allocate future boards by whatever amount of debt service we choose to take out. And that would be rolled in, we have, it's like we have a mortgage. And right now, it's what, 88,000 out of 200,000?
Yeah.
88 out of 20,000, that's our mortgage at County Bunkin County, just like you have a mortgage.
That's our mortgage, the county bank we can have, just like you have a mortgage. The, the, every year, things drop out of that mortgage, so we put stuff in there. And this was figured, we could put this in, the debt service in our mortgage that exists now without having to go up on our rates. So I think that's kind of maybe the simplistic way to look at it. Yes, ma'am?
Take another way, if you look behind you, it was a board up here. We knew that we had 10, 10 and a half million dollars in the one share of that 90% or whatever needed to fund the existing parks and, and staff and maintenance and operations in all of those things, libraries. And then there was a little margin, about 10% margin in there. And we, at our last meeting, we allocated monies, uh, we made a recommendation to allocate monies from that margin to various institutions in town, local projects. And in this budget, I would assume, this is Dr. Green and Stan's recommendation for the allocation of the rest of that money because we left a margin in it. Uh, and if you look at this, they've got the debt service for pool, the debt service for L. J. Master Plant, uh, excuse me, that's not debt service, the debt service for the East Ashford Library, the Greenway Master Plant. I mean, you can see all those numbers up there. I would assume that a 694 that's sitting up there, of course, this is not going to be funded by the commissioners, but that would come out of the CRA budget on the grid that stands, um, in addition to the monies that we recommended or allocation in our last meeting.
Of course, the only thing for next year would be the 475,200, that's right. Right. Really, we've got 675,000.
The other is just on the plan. So already, yeah, money allocated.
So back to what Eleanor was saying, um, I don't want this pool to go away. The pool should be a reality as, as an asset of the community. And, um, you can convince people that we aren't even threatened by the coronavirus if we do it the right way. So I certainly don't want it to go away.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's, you know, I don't, I'm not hearing that out here. I've heard, you know, do your homework, right, do the math, you know, make sure that, you know, we're, we're the one community that wants you to have, that's kind of, that's, that's what I heard.
Look, is everybody good to hear from the public? Any public comment on this, this issue we're addressing? Yes, ma'am? Just kind of.
Since I've been working at, at Janet Hart and working on this for about seven or eight years, I attended a conference in Cal, Caldas Springs, and remember now what year it was, and it was how to build a pool in your community. And I spent my whole funds to fly myself out there and sit in these day-long conferences to figure out how to do this, to get the snowball this tall. And the man recommendation was this, get as many partners as you can, number one. And number two, donate more, well, actually several, donate more than any user groups. There's user groups out there that you don't even know about. One woman I talked to, Karen Towne, is a aquatic therapist. She said, we have to go to Washington DC to do our aquatic therapy conventions. Why can't we do an aquatic convention here? Well, it's because there is no time in any pool in all national to do, to, uh, to do that. So what does that mean for our community if we build something that could accommodate that? We're talking hotel stays. We're talking, this is the billboard house. We're talking bringing people from outside of here. That's one, one way to look at it. The other big thing I came out of that conference today, I said, never, ever, ever, ever build just one pool. There are too many users that need different water, shallow water, cool water, warm water, deep water, that need to be accommodated. So economy of scale would mandate that you build three pools. That's fair recommendation, three pools, one for diving and deep water therapy, kayaking, cool water activities, lots of, um, recreation for kids, opening the pool till midnight and getting these kids that are, you know, stumbling around trying to find things to do, give them games to play in the deep water. You need warm water for therapy, for elderly people to be in the water, and little kids. Little kids and elderly need warmer water. That's why you need a 25, 25 yard pool, maybe four to six lanes at, um, at the handicap accessible. And then you need your competition pool that can also accommodate scuba divers, kayakers, canoeers, uh, water safety people, lifeguard training, um, along with your millions of different competitive teams, your high school teams, club teams, master teams, and whatnot. Oh, oh, so when you done in that pool, it can be done in warm water. So that was their recommendation and that is the approach we went there forward. We brought the expert in USA Swimming, Cool Pedal, and Two Towns, and brought all the stakeholders at the Chamber of Commerce. They all talked about the needs and he said, your community is right for this. This was eight years ago, something like that, probably, correct? So to address your question about revenue, pools very self-made money. The way to make money is to use it 16 hours a day. That's how, how well it has to be used and utilized. Um, if you bring in Michael Phelps in and draw all these people from Knoxville, Tennessee and all the way to North Carolina here for a weekend to meet the Olympian and have this little training thing with him, you walk away with some money that weekend. But if you look at it a little bit differently and think about economic development, then you can speak to that. Look at the economic development and this kind of event, 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 event.
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
Okay. If you're talking about, well, how to get their money back, yeah, you're all, no, probably not realistic. But the economic development, all these hotels can be built and what are they mostly going to be built in the venture? That's where all the swimming competitions are. Your, uh, UNCA, Warren Wilson, Marso College, they all have swimming teams. They're gonna want their, it's in their, in their system or in their programs that their competitions are in January and February. January and February, they're cheap season for their competitions and major events.
Thank you, Paul. I, that's, that's excellent comment. I think there's just a lot we need to do, by the way. Thank you.
Do you have a comment? Sure. Here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Moore. Ain't nobody want to talk on me and then he was the chairman, but, uh, be fair, he will. Uh, I'm pretty flunked when I said that, but Janet too. But limited, you have seen the video, you've seen me here at every meeting. I predict it's what you hear today and it is exactly, the CRA was formed specifically, let that mean you get this one line, that's all they like. They were formed to rubber stamp the Inca Sports Park, period. This has been in the making for years and the fast movement, the fast pace and everything that's been done is nothing but to put it in the sports park. And I'll tell you something else, the media, I'm talking about every, had been put with a gag order on, the commissioners had shut down, they were not asked questions, the media won't go ask them and ask questions. And when you come to do what you're doing today and do it for the service of this community, it is high time to listen to the community, give them the Brothers Town Committee of something that's been in the making for years. You're drawing the right right, you are. That is study. Studies need to be done. Don't throw out a piece of property here and one up here and one of them's out of a piece of property and buy it up. You need to come back here and tell the committee, these are the two choices. You need to get your facts together and your studies together and come back and present what you know. If I were the man, I'd say by now, with what I've got on my mind, I'd say build a pool in Rosson District for the chairman. Because the chairman lives in that district and they deserve it. They've had it there for years, they need that. But here's the other part, you gotta think it's the market community. Are you gonna put one in every district? How big is it gonna be and how fair is it coming? I think it's need to look at this thing in a much better way. Does this committee, and I asked this question, the legal department did not answer. Does this have, this committee have started for a public hearing or just coming into it? I never got an answer. It's going with the county's permission. This is a done deal in the Inca District, or I'm gonna turn the contamination question is not even been brought up by one of us and I told you in this, it's a startup. So that's my input. The table will not break, so you're gonna have to use, you're gonna have to try hard, ask hard questions and you got the business and you got the information. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other public comment on this issue? Yes, sir.
Chris Moore, um, the, of course, for all the listeners, mentioned before, um, I think this gentleman here had made a great comment about, you know, let's just fix, let's fix it, bring it up to the EDA standard, bring it up to the code and make it fair. The reason I'm saying that, if you decide to pull in doors else and disband this pool, the south end of the county will have nothing. There are not any public pools. There's one in therapy and, and came through, but we have no public pools at all on South Avenue. So I want you to consider that too, it means something out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other public comment on this?
Mr. Moore, I echo, um, Mr. Ross, Mr. Bellger. Yes, I think, and now I said, I think I always have too, and a lot of comments. I'd hate to see us, when it takes 20 million dollars on a big pool, we could spend and have partners to raise 10 million dollars, 15 million dollars for a great pool. And, and I think until we've had the time to, to look at those relationships and talk to those partners and talk to YNCA and talk to YWCA and everyone that could, could be a potential partner in this, um, I, I, I think we're just putting our heart and our force a little bit and we should slow down, um, not too slow, because we got this, we got this, you know, thing hanging over our heads here with the pool condition, but I think we need to have those conversations and I think there's a lot of place for me to be, you know, the exciting part.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I already made excellent points. I just wanted to support Mr. Rice, that what does the contamination data that he gave you? Uh, I talked to NC Dean, uh, there are serious contamination issues on the 220 BASF acres there of that property. There have been deep restrictions on account of that property, over 100 acres. Um, some of those mysteriously evaporated, uh, which said no children can be on this property, no schools. Um, and I have put out a request into NC Dean today asking them how those deep restrictions were lifted and why and what was the basis for that. So, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions still about that property and whether it has been cleaned up and how, um, you know, how bad the contamination rate is there. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any other public comment?
I just had one. If you were interested in dollar amounts, I think the Triangle Aquatic Center costs about 20, 20 million dollars roughly. Um, the Green Pool Aquatic Center, I, I believe they spent most of their time designing the pool and then they built the, built the facility around it and, uh, and it was done with hotel taxes, I believe, is what they did. Um, and, and they actually had a tax for the hotels and they had built the, built the facility, but they, they only spent their money on the pool itself. Um, and if you want dollar amounts, I know that, I, I've got some figures of the house from the Melver Aquatic Center, from what I used to work there. Um, uh, Janet Hart has dollar amounts for those other facilities. Don't sell the short of just a, just a 16 million dollars, so go ahead and get the 18 million, 20 million, million dollar facility. And that's my recommendation. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm just seeing, seeing a public comment. Any other public or public here? Okay, I'm clearing the public comments.
I would just like to say that I agree with all this conversation about, uh, ways to fund a project and getting it to the right. Now, I, I think we have government funding certainly, but I think there's many grant opportunities and all kinds of sponsorships, as, as Donna discussed, and naming opportunities for this kind of facility. And then I think, um, looking at long-term operating cost of this facility and how to mitigate that with revenue streams or whatever, I mean, this is a part of the study that we need to do, um, to, to best understand those opportunities. I think the economic development opportunities are outstanding, um, for whatever competition, whatever levels and it's, I love whoever said it could happen in the winter months because that's when we most need to build our hotels. So do we, do we need a motion or recognition?
Can we have just a little more discussion?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, there will be, let me recognize, Mr. President.
So I'm gonna say that, you know, today, people have brought us information. Uh, they, they have done their diligence. I don't want anybody to misunderstand what's going on here. Give us information regarding pieces of property that you were familiar with for us to look at. Um, and no one said that we don't make a decision on these property debt at all, um, at all. You know, as a matter of fact, you know, the, the conversation has totally gone off the property. And then, and back to where it needs to be, which is, which is the need, that doesn't mean that, you know, you guys have done, we're so grateful for what y'all done. Back to the need here for them. But I did want to say something about the TDA, um, and that the, the hotel tax that is existing today and the economic development that can come from the proper facility design properly. I don't, Eric, can you receive money from, you know, namesakes, corporate sponsors, beloved people that, 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 you know, would like their children, grandchildren to know maybe this smaller heated pool was named after them, which is some of the things we saw in some difficult. Then you've got the being able to put additional heads in, in beds, as they say, the hotel industry, they can do the math and do the numbers and you can, you can show the economic impact of that and receive quite a bit of money. And so there's, there's, all these things are, are, they, they, to us, you know, we want it to be clear on today. And, and I think the board has also continued to do that, continue to do that.
I'd say that, yeah, we, we still have, we're, we're, we're doing what we do for the Georgia management, they're able to fall apart if the president ever goes in and they want to cancel. So obviously, we're gonna have to make our own recommendations, I would think, uh, that's what we do then.
Are you prepared to do that?
I'm, I agree with you, I'm probably ready to do it.
Okay, that, you know, I don't want to get too hard on the horse, but however we want to do that.
Can you have a discussion? I think I have potential to.
I, I have a question about US, um, I know they're very helpful, I know they come in areas, they advise, um, they help. Would there be any possibility, I, I know it's old, but would there be any way that we could engage them in coming, one, to look at the future size feasibility, but also to look at Zoyner?
They did when they were here.
Okay.
They saw, they saw some of the potential sites, they saw, um, Red Park Pool. In fact, he was actually kind of excited about enclosing Red Park Pool as a permanent thing.
Right.
And then building a second pool with that, you know, kind of making this your 50-yard pool, making, and building another pool and expanding that. And I, I wish I had brought all of that in from, I found out about this meeting 20 minutes before it all started, so I, I didn't bring any of my.
I, I've talked to Tim Green a fair amount.
Yeah.
And he's, and he's shared a lot of that with me.
Good, yeah, he's, he's been very involved too, exactly.
Okay. All right, I kind of heard a, a motion to do a study.
It's possible, it's staged, yes.
SCA, I kind of heard a, a potential motion to do, to fix it or more to explore that. Um, what's the pledge from the board? I think we kind of have to, and they might live together. And, and I think I heard a, not a motion, but a, another suggestion or a legal analysis that we do have the authority to, um, make recommend, make plan, survey, studies of parks, uh, under, and make recommendations. We do have a 6.5 million dollar holder in the current budget that the county manager has suggested, um, at our last commissioner. manager has suggested, um, at our last commissioner meeting. So, putting all that together, anybody want to?
I want to take seven. Um, we have the, the six point five, which is seventy-five thousand dollars a million, which is, my understanding, the debt service.
Well, probably four hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that, that money in the city budget, which is pretty interesting, that that's very close to the amount. Okay, because it's not six and a half million dollars set aside, there's, as we all understand, there's the debt service, what I found, because we're very close to, uh, close enough to this pool. I think we could do a motion, including both things, to go to the commissioners, that we, that we nail down the, the dollar amount of the area that it has, to fix the Zoryner pool and bring in, uh, local citizens, corporate stakeholders, local institutions, uh, the sports commission, the, the local involvement to do a study for a, a, uh, a easily accessible or centrally located, which could be, could be the, uh, aquatic center that would be, that would be the part of the study. But I'm hearing that we have, that we're going to do both of those.
Okay. Okay, I, I, listen, I restate. I've heard a motion to continue to, to study and get public input from sports commission, stakeholders, institutions and all, swim teams, all interested parties toward the needs of Bunker County.
Designing the needs for.
Okay, the needs for a Bunker County Aquatic Center. And a secondary part of that is to, are you making motion to, to use the available funds to repair or to ask the construction staff to look and advise us on the repairs?
We can advise us the amount, but I'm, I'm saying specifically that that, uh, that yes, that the money that's sitting there, that was allocated for the debt service, that that money be allocated for repair and fix the pool. I think that's good news that that amount is already allocated and that it's close.
Your point, Claire, is the study from two, twenty twelve was around four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to bring it up to code. It wasn't to fix the pool or to, you know, expand the pool, it was to bring it up to code, elevator, bathrooms, accessibility, entrance and out. So, that's the additional information, I don't have to say that.
Commissioner, would you be willing to word it, that the construction staff to come back to the commission or the CRA with additional information on the cost of, one, repairing and, two, bringing it up to emergency standards or something like that?
Actually, we need to be able to, I don't, you know, you have to be, you know, I don't want to come back, you know, with, you know, one free million dollars when we can, when we can keep it going for, you know, six hundred, I'm talking about a bare bonus number.
See, I'm concerned that, that her, the number they got two years ago, you know, might be way off, just to keep it going, you know, I mean, it might be a lot more.
We don't have to have that number though. So, however, we need to make the recommendation, that we get that number or we don't have to get that number.
Mr. gentleman, he says like two, two motions to me, one about Zoryner, one about, you know.
Let's do it that way. Just do like that. They're making a motion, then I'll make mine on the pool and with, uh, Mr. Kerr.
So, your motion is to study the, let's see, actually, that was your motion?
No, it was our motion.
Okay, you made the original motion.
My motion, yeah, I don't know whether we need to clear up one of these at our time or do we have both of them at the same time?
Let's do the study, I think, let's do the study, I, I will rule the study concept would be first and then we'll do the second, Zoryner, the second.
My motion is to engage community stakeholders in determining the needs for the new aquatic facility and to perform a planning feasibility study to identify and create a relationship with respective sponsors and lenders in collaboration with the county, all with the goal of developing a more comprehensive, well-located aquatic center for the people of Bunker County.
All right, there's been a motion, uh, to engage community stakeholders in determining the needs, determining the fund feasibility with sponsors and possible partners toward the goal of more comprehensive aquatic center for the people of Bunker County.
Well-located.
Well-located, well-located, okay. All right, there's been a motion and a second by Commissioner Frost. Is there any discussion of that motion? All questions, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion recommendation is passed six to zero. Mr. Veltzer.
Motion that we update the cost to bring the Zoryner pool up to a safe and optimal condition. And we present that to the public and the commissioners with consideration.
Second.
Motion by, by, uh, Commissioner Veltzer, second by Ms. Tessie. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Yes, sir. I like that, but if doing all that costs more than covering the other pool, true risk on coverage.
I think the key organ, key organization is, well, I don't know.
Okay, how about this? Do you agree with the, to update the cost of bringing Zoryner or Zoryner up to a safe and optimal condition or covering other options to, to maintain a indoor pool?
Actually, my motion is, is to bring that, bring that, kind of cause of bringing that specific one up to code, that specific place, because we've already had that massive structure in fifty years of nature. So, all of that, you know, you know, so if they did, did, is specific now, uh, I just heard that information about, you know, and so that, you know, that raised my tension about the other location, you know, but my specific is directed at the Zoryner.
Okay, so your motion is to update, to, to instruct staff to update the figures on the cost of Zoryner, bring it up to a safe and optimal condition, uh, get present, uh, public comment, but to, and to, for the commission to act.
Um, yeah, I want to present it to this board, you know, present it to the commissioners with public consideration and.
And action, okay, and so, so he's wanting to, he says we go with it once we get the information.
So, uh-huh. So, is your motion saying that no matter what it costs to fix?
Consider then the key organizational consideration.
Things you won't decide.
It's a consideration published, I mean, you know, I don't know how much it's going to cost, but, you know, I heard five fifty plus around out there and I've heard that, you know, and, and I'm saying that that needs to be considered, needs to fix that. If we're going to, if we're, we end up going the other direction for a larger facility, if we have an existing facility in the community that's been serving there for a long time and they give up and, uh, and I, I think, I know that, assuming that you agree with what I'm saying.
That is specific, so, yeah, so, but I'm speaking specific about the Zoryner pool. Sorry, that.
The same, same thing is.
I would say that's, it's a, I don't know what will happen once, uh, some other facility give, give, you know, what that looks like and when it's decided, but in the meantime, you know, you know, I'm saying that we need to fix that, please. Because it's, I mean, it's going to take, I mean, we probably say, I mean, if this is two years, which I think, you know, it is.
You have a lot of, you know, that.
Well, I'm not saying do it, I mean, I don't, I mean.
It's like you want to judge.
I mean, we're going to have to decide the amount. I couldn't put it, I mean, I could just, uh, six hundred thousand, okay.
I'm glad I could tell you.
You know, I don't.
I don't want to.
I think I need to hear, you know, what it takes to get it to code right now, you know, safe and, well, I say safe and optimal. Am I okay, Mary Jenkins?
Second question, say, say, I don't want that code could have some rather important decisions too.
Yes.
I don't want to get into weeds on that and I, I, and with due respect to, uh, to the commissioner, I don't, I don't, I really don't want to worry and I'm here in five fifty and so, you know, it's a good investment in the community.
Right.
Probably doable since, since we're going to say we're, we're not going to do the six point five and the four seventy-five would be there, it's not going to make any, hopefully, you know, hopefully that's going to be close to that, so it won't impact the budget. It's not a lot.
I don't know that we won't do the six point five. I, I don't know if we might not do something in the next year if we get cost of the economy.
Well, it would be, it's probably, it's probably.
Or at least set the, set the course for next year.
Well, I think we'll do that with this, with the study and I think, I'm hearing the public says, look at this, is your point?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I, I think I'm against the motion that they say it was turned because we're locked, I don't want to be locked in, I don't know that that, I, I like the first part of that, I don't, I, I, I'm hearing that they say go there anyway, you know, and I don't want to be locked in.
Okay, we don't want you to be confused as to any question.
Okay, well, I'm just, okay, the motion to update the cost, say, optional, take public comment, maintain while considering, um, more comprehensive, possible more comprehensive plan. I, I don't know, I, I just don't want to be locked into.
I mean, I, I don't care how we write it, I am saying to find out how much it costs to fix the water.
Safe and optimal, I got that.
To get it in a safe and op, optimal condition, like to know how much that is and, and, uh, we're not going to make recommendations to do it until we're in that.
Okay, well, I, that's, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to say, you know, well, there's this opening amount, you know, we're approving. No, I'm saying that, you know, that we need to find out how much it costs to fix that pool. Now, I'm going to recommend we fix that pool if that amount is, is, is.
But not as a motion because you don't know at this point.
I, I, if it's close to that, I'm going to rec, I'm recommending we fix it, you know, because we already have it set there, we already have it tracked, so I think y'all know basically exactly where I'm at.
Would it be, the motion could be, President, um, to instruct staff to find out the cost of, if making the pool safer and comparable? And is that an intention? That's not a.
Well, this is not an equal, or I don't want the chairman to think that I'm doing an equal, this is definitely not an equal, okay? We've already got the study, we're going to do the study, we're per, per, correct, yeah. Um, I'm saying find out how much, how much it's going to cost to fix the Zoryner pool.
And then he recommended beyond getting cost.
So, so that, uh, a recommendation, I mean, I'm, that a recommendation can be made on that.
Okay, to, to get the point to, to arrive at a recommendation, a future recommendation.
That will.
I just want to make sure, I'm sorry, does that take the, does that take the punch out of the motion? I mean, if it does, we're good.
I think in the end, what the staff comes back with is what we, and I think we're getting a lead on that, that's, and what it will, whatever that sounds, we just make the motion, staff comes back with the price.
Sure.
That's the motion, yes, sir.
Okay. So, okay, does everybody understand the motion? I think it is basically a, we're locked in, it's too much, we, I think, Mr. Kerr. The other discussion, the motion made by Commissioner Veltzer, second by Mr. Kerr. If not a call question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. They're paused. All right, that covers the pool part, um, East Line, East Line.
Uh, Mary Bruce, I just want to report that we will begin conversations, uh, serious conversations with the city on the East Angeles site, um, next month. And, uh, since that is in the capital plan for the following year, our objective is to have this project ready to go beginning of the next, of the next budget. Um, so at this point, we want to make sure that all of our proposals to do there is feasible, I mean, so we have the city recreation staff, planning staff, we've done the parking, some possibilities, some potential zoning issues there, we want to make sure this is ready to go when we get to this point next year.
Okay, do we, it is in the capital from the county manager's proposed budget for fifteen, we need to get the action on that.
I don't really think we can.
Okay, all right. Um, announcements, our next scheduled meeting with the CRA is the July eighth, two thousand and fourteen, beginning at three o'clock in Pat and Warner Land area. I think we do have a need for a short closed session tonight, is that right?
Yes, we have a talk with each, the property issues, actually, to be easier, you know, it's like a good.
All right, is there a motion to go in closed session? Second, a motion by, uh, Commissioner Frost, second by Ms. Tessie, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We're in closed session, I think we go.
We're going to go back and then go in for a break.
All right, we have been in closed session to discuss, um, property matters. Is there a motion to go into open session?
No.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner Veltzer. Is there any discussion, motion to go back into open session? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to go into open session passes six to zero. Is there any further business come forward to the CRA? Another motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, there's a second, second by Mr. Kerr, any discussion?
Have we seen Harry Trump?
I would like to, is it possible to add that percentage?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm curious, uh, what are the options for this, this area? My question first off is, should three and a half cent town cable source, and that's not even made, I think, there's some, so what can happen to that, or still remain indicated run even though Sierra was?
No, we'll, um.
It just goes back, it just goes back, you know, to all, all this property tax, so it's.
I understand it goes over to jail.
Does not, just, just be.
Not such a good, yeah. Mission could not earmark for specific, these same specifics that are.
Hopefully, um, I think you're rolling around in the spirit of the CRA, well, and that would be a benefit for the citizens.
I think a lot, you know, we don't want a good conversation around these assets, I think, you know, I say that publicly, publicly more than once, that, you know, where this thing shook out, who knows, there's all this possible discussion. We have got some press on, you know, about the needs in, in the area. And, and I got to say that, um, the two that I did not know before, uh, I think have brought to the table, uh, knowledge that was necessary in this opinion and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I think we made very, very good selections of our board members for all of you, and we appreciate it.
But, um, I, and I, you know, I kind of, back of my mind, kind of like to think that, 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 uh, that some of these, you know, people that are involved now, we'll be able to still keep them involved in some way, some shape.
One of those provisions that the models can be recreated.
Or is it sent?
Yes.
It's all right. Uh, probably the immediate state of those existing doors is that it's the same utility that's been growing off the, the years of mine, and I've participated in this, I've never had them done. It's just a lot of, and it's, it's well intentioned, I think, some good things to come out of that. I agree, that's exactly what you're going to do. Unless the county commission earmarks or that's something special to make these things a priority, we would like to pass them.
I think it's, I think this would not, not for this, but the Fisher, you know, the fours are, the commission raised that, that, you know, each, you know, if there's three, it could be a different place for us to be, to bring to the, to, to.
Action associated with these things, it's not, it's.
Well, this is definitely the first point, so everybody has to, by definition, because it would be a public, this is the, I don't know, I don't think there's enough board, there's no other board we have to ask for. Tell the commission, so.
No.
So, can I do something on a personal note before we get out here?
Sure.
Okay. Miss Tessie's middle daughter, if you have not picked up the June copy of Ver, I'm leaving my home on the morning early, hot air balloons take off frequently from our field in Canada. And there's this striking value out in the middle of my field, and I like that, if I have to, I really care, but I think there's, yeah, I make a long, short, for Ver, did a shoot, and her daughter did the modeling, and it was, it turned out gorgeous, and it started at daybreak with the hot air balloons, and it was just beautiful. So pick up the latest version of Ver to see Miss Sarah.
And Joseph.
Yeah, and a lot of people, I think, Miss Sarah, chances, I posted something yesterday with another balloon, it was actually a Japanese couple, came down from Canada, had seen that ad, well, sort of flew down here and had their pictures taken with some, with some balloons, and I posted another beautiful picture in the evening, and Sarah said, responded to it and said, after seeing this one and another one, you know, digging out, she said, now I understand why it's a joy to be able to see those, you know, balloons in the morning. Exactly, it says now, it's a sweet, sweet girl.
Somebody drag on. All right, there's been a motion, second, all those in favor, a motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. To adjourn, six to zero.